Okay. Just a few housekeeping things. Zach is running a few minutes late, so we will note in the meeting minutes when he arrives. Nate is attending via webcam. So any motions need to be roll called. And you actually need to make a motion to allow Nate to participate.
Yep.
All right.
Make a motion to allow Nate to participate?
Okay. We can start roll call now.
Okay, I'm in favor.
Okay.
Nate, are you in favor of that? Okay, thumbs up?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Nate is allowed. I don't think his vote actually counts, but it does.
Yes.
If you allow him to do that, yeah. All right, cool. Nate is in. Can Nate hear us?
Yeah, he can hear, right?
Yep. Can he talk to us?
I don't think so.
He can unmute.
He might not want to.
You can unmute yourself if you need to.
So you'll have to unmute him. I think if you hover over his name, there's a little microphone with a little should be aligned with him.
Request unmute.
So maybe Nate should mute himself on this side.
All right, thank you. So I'll mute myself here and then when necessary, I'll jump in.
All right, perfect.
Perfect, thanks Nate.
Thank you.
All right, first order of business is pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, now we are approving minutes for June 6th, June 21st, and the non-public board June 21st. Does anyone want to tackle any of those first?
Can we do a bulk motion?
Yep. So I'll make a motion to approve all three sets of minutes. Okay, and discussion. Anyone have anything they'd like to change? Zach has entered at 6:05. Kristen's not here. There's an agenda. Sorry. Go. We're in discussion about the minutes. Does anyone have anything to add about any of the minutes or any discussion you'd like to have? No? Or Zach, do you need a minute?
I will abstain on this to the department.
Okay. Okay, so if there's no further discussion, we will vote. Nate?
He's on the computer. Let's see what we got.
I'm muted.
Aye.
Aye, all right. Ellen?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
Aye. And?
One abstention.
One abstention. All right. So we'll move on to immediate business. First up is public comments.
Kevin Verbo and Karen Road. I'm going to remind you guys, none of you has a mandate. None of you were elected with a majority vote of people that voted. You won by plurality, less than 50%. The mandate is school choice. That's what the town voted for. So we're in catch-22 meets you can't win from losing. So you refuse to consider top-off agreements because you're afraid of potential litigation. So then the legislature passes a law to clarify and codify top-off agreements. And then I hear debate amongst the board that you're still not comfortable moving forward with that for some unknown reason. So you wouldn't do it because there was no law that specifically allowed you. And now you've got numbers that don't seem interested because you're upset that it required a law to allow it. So my request is that if you don't want to do top-off agreements, just come clean and say, "I don't support top-off agreements and I'm not going to vote in favor of them." Let the voters know where you stand. Right? The reason we passed that law is because of people like you that said, "We're not going to consider top-off agreements because we're afraid of potential litigation." So we took that risk out of your purview, did you a favor. So the next one is paralysis by analysis or bad faith, right? And I'm going to start with the bad faith. Lottery? You guys are discussing lottery? The one firm rail of public education in Deerfield is high school lotteries. And you guys are like, "We could do it by lottery." That, oh, so yeah, we did it. We did it in the way that you found the least palatable and the most offensive to the vast majority of people. Really? I mean, for me, it's beyond, it's beyond the pale. The paralysis by analysis is, you guys, it seems to me like you're trying to find the most difficult convoluted solution to this problem that you can. Right? The solution is do your contract with Concord. You love Concord. Do a contract with Concord. Just don't have any minimum attendance of the Deerfield population. Then pass a top-off policy for the district and allow families to send their students wherever they'd like to send their students, up to whatever amount you set for the top-off policy. That's fiscally neutral for the taxpayer. It's almost, a top-off agreement set at whatever your contract amount is, is the same amount of money for everybody. And if we're going to hide behind special ed, that all gets billed for exact cost, whether it goes to Concord or Co-Brown or anywhere. And if you're going to deny people choice because you want to save money in special ed, it's disingenuous, right? Pass a top-off policy, let families send you kids, fiscally neutral?
Thank you.
Just a couple last things, please.
Well, it's been three minutes and our policy's three minutes. So there is another public comment at the end.
Yeah, so I'm going to go a little long. As I've been watching the meetings and you let people run long and you don't like the message, you say, "All right, I'm up to three minutes." So that's, and that's fine. I think you guys get my point. People are paying attention. There's a lot of people saying they're going to vote no on everything until they get school choice. I'm hearing that in all different corners of this town. You guys are playing with fire. You should just do what the voters have asked you to do and make life easy and happy for them. Thank you.
Kimberly Black meeting, Hesil. It was hard watching the last meeting as a family of alumni from Co-Brown. I understand that you guys may not feel that you are a warm and fuzzy school, but I think it's a very valid option for many. Actually, the majority of towns, based on the surveys you guys have sent out and based on the people that have voted that they want to see multiple options. In my visions magazine that I get, it was ironic in reading through the top 10 that in the top 10 students at Co-Brown, one of them was a Concord family, as listed right here. So Concord families also choose Co-Brown. However, they may have done it, I'm not going to surmise. But there's a Concord student, a Concord family from Co-Brown. And I think we need to take very careful consideration of the fact that Concord may not even be for Concord students. With that in mind, I just want to make a comment about the expansion. It's very hard looking at that, watching what has passed for years, which is the minimum. It has been, we need two rooms for a kindergarten, a part-time kindergarten. We get two rooms for a part-time kindergarten. The following year, they put in the cafeteria, three rooms and two over that, which was literally the bare minimum of what they need. Nothing more is ever going to pass than the bare minimum of what this needs. So take out the meeting spaces, take out the special ed spaces, do something for at least four classrooms. Guys, nothing else is going to pass in this town. And I think if you keep trying to just put in a little more pizzazz into that, the town's just not going to listen at all. And they're already not listening to what the staff need. So let's make sure we get what the students need, which is four more classrooms.
Thank you.
Greg Woodmore, North Road. So I got a copy of the oath of office that's used by elected officials in Deerfield, and I wanted to read an excerpt from it. So I state your name, DeSohnly, and sincerely swear and affirm that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon me. And it's the term "partially" that really catches my attention. So the school board's given a clear directive by the town to implement high school options. And I don't feel that the high school, the school board is pursuing this task in an impartial manner. And I say this because of my experience at the last school board meeting, where I was subjected to a 45-minute discussion by the school board, which made clear their bias against Co-Brown. And curiously, why was this even a topic of discussion? Because the town made it clear in multiple surveys that Co-Brown is the favorite school, so why was this discussion necessary? It certainly did not imbue confidence in me that negotiations were being conducted in an impartial manner. When asked when the next round of negotiations would occur, we were informed that the meetings were not even scheduled. So the concern of many is that the school board will claim they do not have enough time and will cram into place some sort of short-term exclusive contracts with only Concord High School, be it one-year or three-year extensions. So what I'm asking is for you to focus your efforts on high school options. Give us what we voted for. You're now gearing up for a renewed push for DCS expansion. That was handily voted down. The town is clearly focused on high school options. Focus on that, secure it, then shift your efforts back to DCS expansion. Thank you.
Nancy Shute, Pleasant Hill Road. It's amazing to me that we can sit at meetings and hear totally different things. I heard that people wanted to understand the special ed differences between Concord and Co-Brown, and if you could with the cost-related, you did that. And then we hear, "Oh, well, the school board is saying private schools don't provide special ed." That was, I don't know, maybe I missed that meeting when you said that, but it wasn't said at that particular meeting. And we did say that if a family chooses to go to a private school, then the school is no longer. But I feel like the school board did do what people asked. And I keep hearing that the school board isn't going to offer choice. I don't believe that. I'm not hearing that. I think you are going to offer choice. You did have acknowledged that, yes, that is what was voted for. It's not something that can happen immediately when you're negotiating, in my opinion, with different towns. It takes time to negotiate. I heard you say that you are looking for a short-term solution so that you can bring it to, you can make sure that the students are able to start selecting courses when they're supposed to, when they need to, that you have something in place that they can go to. And you also want to bring it to the community, because I heard you say you're concerned about all of a sudden having that amount of money added to the budget or possibility of that amount of money added to the budget without the community knowing it. So again, I know, I guess I'm one of the few that come and say, "Thank you." I do feel that you're trying to do what's best for the students and for the community as a whole. And we are a community. And I am so frustrated when I keep saying, "This is a fight. You need to go out and fight for it." It shouldn't be a fight. I do believe we're all here looking for what's best for the students and the community. So again, I thank you.
Other public comments?
Can I say something real quick?
You can be a member of the public. You do like to make comments.
It's more of just kind of an observation or just attitude. So I think it's important for everybody to remember, the only opportunity we have to communicate and move out ideas and have discussions and root through our thoughts is in these meetings. We can't sit down somewhere afterwards and have a meeting and discuss this stuff. So when you see us having conversations in these meetings and we're going and we're figuring things out, we're rooting out what we're trying to solve. It's disheartening when those conversations get turned into something that isn't necessarily what it is, other than us as an elected body having a conversation, trying to figure out an issue. Face it. So I would hope that as people here, boards, not just this board, but any board, have these conversations that they have to have in public, that they be understanding that that's the process. We have to have these conversations and we have to have grievances aboard, disagreements aboard. We have to come together. Maybe we come together unanimously on something. Maybe we do, maybe we don't. But until we can have these conversations, we can't do anything. So I think it's important, try to be understanding that this is the process. And as much as sometimes you may not hear what you want to hear in those conversations, for us to have an exchange of ideas, we have to communicate with each other. We have to do it.
Yeah, you didn't go over it.
Kimberly Black meeting, Hesil. Just to follow up with that, Zach. It's really hard to cram in everything you guys talk about in three-minute, short and sweet conversation that I would much rather have over a coffee and a beer. So I understand that I come up to this table very short because I need to get a very clear point across to you guys. And it's not personal at you, but it's all very personal to me. So don't take it personal, but know that it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Patty, it's not showing the picture of the room. Is that a problem? The back camera, you mean? People will still be able to hear us, but there won't be video. Did you shut off the video? Nate, can you see the room?
Hey. What was that? No, the camera's off. I can't see the room. I'm the only one on screen now, so that's okay. We can keep it that way if you want. Oh, yeah, the screen is back up.
Stopped the video when we started the video. Didn't stop, you didn't stop. Oh, so you stopped and started the camera? Perfect. Sorry.
No, that's okay. Little technical difficulties with the camera, apologies for that. We're going to move on to an agenda review. We have quite a lengthy agenda tonight. Does anything, does anyone have anything else that they'd like to add to the business portion?
Are there any consent items?
No. I am going to see where we're at time-wise with the policies. I don't want to rush through the policies, but I do realize that there are some that we probably want to pass sooner than later. So some of these we may put on another meeting if it's running too late. I have a small comment for each one that might help us. Perfect. Okay. Anything else that anyone wants to discuss about the agenda? All right. Next item is 23, 24 bus routes.
Welcome, thank you.
All right. I realized you just got them this morning. The ones that I sent you are on the same plan that we had in last year, but we just found out today, we confirmed that we do have five drives, so more than five in the afternoon. At least we'll get started. So you will not have to have any doubles in the afternoon.
No doubles, did you say?
No doubles in the afternoon, and we can still have our PM Concord High School. We do have more in training, so it should get better as we go.
So that changes the routes that you gave this afternoon, so we can put new ones in?
Right, so. Range Road, not yet, but the bridge.
Yeah.
Yeah, the 107. Yeah. 107 Bridges is actually as big a deal as it could be, so it's okay. The high school bus can go down as far as Old Center and the kids from the bridge to there can catch the bus there. And then it will go around Hope Center onto Meeting House, take a left, go back to Parade, stop at the bottom of the bridge, so the kids from that side of the bridge over there can catch the bus there. You know, continue on this morning. The other bus will just do the tutorial a little bit earlier if they start it. Purple bus is the only one affected, however, I'm sure. So they'll do something somewhere. They'll go to Hope Center, start from there, so anybody's safe. They'll come up and meet them, or go on the route they normally do. The only kids we won't be able to get to are the kids from the bridge to Hankland, which is reasons pond and a couple of houses. And a lot of them don't ride in the morning, in the morning. So that won't be as bad as we thought. Range Road, I've got to re-figure because we use it for a couple of loops to go through there. It's cross. So that's another thing. I haven't heard how long, so. Yeah, a lot of towns are going through that right now. Okay, yeah. We've been going for either end of pains because there's only a couple of students, only one has arrived. So at least that wouldn't impact a lot. There's a little bit more on margin range, just a few families. So we'll have to figure out something there where they may have to do the same thing. What did the others charge you to get? So these, so the current stops and everything, new families, as far as we know right now, most of these are going to be pretty much what you have in the morning will be the afternoon. You basically need to look at counts just to make sure in case we have to swing a few stops to another bus, just to make sure everybody fits to go home as well. But it shouldn't be hard. We won't have any kids at school. Yay. So Concord High School routes are there as well. They are not different from last year. I've been, I've been stopped on the family end of the road. They both do start as they have since the middle of the pandemic on, one starts the 107 side of town and one starts over towards the Rainbow side of town, and they head towards South Road. That enables us to, if we have, as we're getting towards the end deliveries, if one needs help because they have too many students and they need the bus to grab the stops, if they can, if the numbers get down and not lower enough, it also gives the option, should they have dragged the feet out and they don't have a spare, they can have those kids get on to get the bus up and continue on and not go right back to Deerfield. Situation, you can get the other kids to school. Not what we plan to do, but it's an option if we get to that point in the rider share.
My only question that I don't know if you've looked at this. We've gotten a few emails requesting, like, switching the routes. So like the Concord kids who got picked up first get flipped to get picked up last.
So the ones that get picked up first on the 107 side get off first.
Okay.
So.
But they'll still get picked up first.
They'll get picked up first because they get off first. And that also is because they're both going to that side of the queue. The other one comes back to that side of the Bedouin side, because that's where the bulk of the kids are. So I think we set to start there.
Got it.
Just like the other one, as the bulk of its kids are on the 107 side, so it's like they'll straight back to there, they drop off there. It's like, yeah, first.
And then someone raised the idea about having sort of a last stop. That was like sort of a group stop. So like, if there was a child at the front end of the pickup who didn't want to get on the bus that early, their parent could bring them to another stop. As sort of the last stop.
Yep.
Do we, have we explored any of that?
Once we know what the counts are, because when we begin the year, you have to take the bus you're assigned to, because we need to make sure the space for you on the bus that covers your side of town, if you're ever riding. Once we get, see what those numbers are, then we can look at that and then we do offer that. That's completely available if they want to go to the other side as well. And that's been offered in the past as well.
Okay, got it.
So. I'm very hopeful. We've got people in the works, we're trying to get people through. So it's just, we were hoping we'd be ready quicker, but not quite there, so, yeah.
So we have changes, because we have them for the meeting in two weeks?
Yes. Yeah, I'm gonna, yeah, I'm gonna get to work on the five to make sure those are set to go and then we go from there.
You do. It's up to the board if you want to preliminarily approve them, knowing this change is coming, or if you want to just hold off until we have the set. It'd be confusing, I think, to people to publish these.
Oh, yeah.
And if you approve them, people are going to ask for them, so.
Right.
It would be better to hold off. So you want, you're saying approve them tonight and that way when Kelly fixes the five-five, they can just go out?
You can approach.
Okay. I'll second. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I got a question.
Yeah, thanks.
Thanks. Zach, so are you saying that you're approving the five and five? You're not approving these? Is that what the motion is? So we wouldn't be sending these out now, we would be sending them out once the five has been?
Yeah, so once Kelly updates the afternoon runs for the five, the runs, I just realized, Zach. Looking at you on the screen.
Is there any other discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Roll call.
Aye. Nate?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you so much for coming and for all of your hard work. Having fun, Kelly?
This was the most pleasant visit we've had in like six or seven years.
All right? It's exciting.
Thank you for coming. And there are no agenda, because the agenda hit on us, okay? Review of correspondence. So unfortunately, we don't have the printed packet as our lovely admin staff are not here to print it for us. I didn't even think to do it in their absence. There are approximately, one, two, three, six, 12 emails that are currently in the drive. I can go through and read off who sent us emails and then see if there's something that people wanted to talk about or respond to, or we can sort of just publish them all at the minutes. What say you?
I'm okay with attaching to the minutes.
Okay. So we will not go through every correspondence that we have received, but we will attach them all to the meeting minutes. Those interested to peruse. Facility updates. Zach, I understand that you are providing the facility updates tonight.
So the three big projects that are going on, we'll kind of talk about more of it. The fire alarm devices, all parts have all been installed. They're currently addressing them in the panel. That process will take maybe another week, week and a half, and then start the testing. So that project's going well. The roof, they are, from what Kristen told me, about two-thirds done. Yesterday, there's about eight to two weeks left. Other, and then the parking lot is the rough. And then the parking lot is the rough grade is down. They have another week's worth of sort of excavation. Drain and then they'll be able to start hot toppings. Two weeks as well, which is. Everything's kind of coming together very quickly. Um, and we'll probably be cutting it close to the start of school, but it should all be wrapped up.
Yeah, I was going to ask, do we um, anticipate the hot tub will be done before the teachers come back?
What Chris is saying is the plan. And I always, it seems like they're on the line. I know there was one item that I think that you had for us. Chris mentioned about adding a drain. Yes, no?
I thought we were just adding it because it was, I thought it was needed, so we needed to do it.
Okay, I think you thought we were discussing, you want to high rumble it?
Yeah, I don't know enough about the drain, so you'll have to.
Okay, so for the access road, uh, going around the backside of the building, the backyard. They want to add a basin and a drain out to it, another catch basin we have just passed the red shed that holds the water pumps, water tanks. Um, just to make sure there's no pool anywhere. So Steve, the contractor's looked at it and think he estimated less than five thousand bucks. And we wanted to do that, so I think he was hoping for a project or a, so I guess I would say that I can answer questions on it from what I know.
Additional water, then we'll be able to, it's the catch basin.
Yeah, so I guess, so there's an existing basin behind that red shed and this is actually going to help. Currently, some of that water pools behind the shed starts to flow into water. I don't think there have been basement, yeah, one of the pump chamber underneath the red shed. But there's a catch basin behind that and he said that it's steering to, so it's not, it's not causing issues.
And Steve, the town engineer, has reviewed it.
Yep, he said Steve in contract. So I made the motion to.
I will second that motion. Uh, any discussion?
Yeah, I got a question.
Yep.
Um, Zach, is that catch basin? It has a drain that's going to require digging or is it going to be like a drywall kind of thing? What does that, what does that do? Because there is a sort of a little stream down there. What does that do to that stream?
It's a, it's a structure and a pipe basically to bring it out to the um, catch area behind the red shed. So it's a small, it would be a small concrete structure with a pipe on the side, down to that shed, catch everything.
I'm sorry, I can't quite hear you, but the catch basin you're talking about would just hold the water and it would seep into the ground right there? Or there would be a drain?
The catch basin would have a pipe, it would then bring it out past the red shed where the water grabs.
And, and the engineer was able to look at how that might change the flow pattern of that stream into the pond? And that was okay with our engineer?
Yep. And I wouldn't necessarily call it a stream, but yes, it would just.
Have a little bridge over it.
The, behind that?
Yeah, and that's you talking about the red shed by the kindergarten.
I'm talking, no, next to the module. Yeah, that little red shed right there. And that's just the pump, the pump chambers in the water.
Need more colors of sheds here.
Yeah, they're all the same color.
Red shed, blue shed, green shed. So it, it's just to prevent pond in the road where it goes out. Between the old and the red and face.
Um, yeah, and I guess I'm just concerned that when we change that flow, uh, the outflow there to a more focused, um, you know, in the big rains we've been getting this summer, for example. That could really change the erosion patterns into that area under the bridge that I think Ellen's talking about. And I guess my question is, is it also thinking? Behind the what?
Yeah, I was thinking of the one that was behind the kindergarten building. He's talking about over by the modulars.
Okay, oh, okay. Right.
That's a, an unused. And the water is still running that way. We're just able to control. Yeah, we're just good.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Nate?
Hi.
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 Okay, any other facility updates?
Do we have a um, backup plan for parking if we don't have the hot tub finished before the teachers come back? Would they be able to park on that without the hot tub down?
The hot tub wasn't down. They could, probably cut it off too.
But, yeah.
Okay.
Hot tub going down.
Right.
Um, I think the bigger concern, I talked to Chris about this and she's. Prior to today. And just remind the uh, teachers turning and all that stuff, just to take it easy on her for the first couple of weeks. Um, while it's.
Still will stop.
Well, yeah, it's, it's going to be hot for a couple of days. So he said.
The parking pattern is also going to change from what they have been doing, so.
They'll have lines, the lines may go down, we may have the school starts, but.
The lines are like in a different orientation than people were previously.
Everybody has to find a spot.
It's going to, it's going to be a great test to see if the lines can be followed, right? But in the lines, there may be a couple of days of school between asphalt going down and paint going down where the. I'm kidding, but uh.
So do we have to consider also then, like, yes, the teachers need a little bit of education on what to do or not to do, but also the back to school barbecue? Because it's going to make plenty cars here.
There is going to be, that is something, um, that's a good point. I mean, that's the day before school starts, so the parking lot would likely be running. We may want to just leave it closed if you remember. It could off in the case.
Especially if there's not lines on it.
Right, we can go, we very easily can go off. And then we still have all the parking up behind the ball field, all that's in the pipe, we have the backyard, we have the road. So we can still. Fill up our.
Any other questions? We are now on handbook changes.
Could we actually vote for it?
Can we vote?
Yes, okay. I can't.
I thought, yes. Do you want to just give a little sure? So there were a few pages of handbook changes, only the highlighted sections were changed, so I think there were like five pages. They were pretty straightforward. And obviously the drop off and pickup um, procedures are changing. Um, and then there's something about, um, we changed our. Software, our payment center for lunches, um, we're now going to be S A U, using the same program, which is much easier to um, have assistants and have our tech integrator know how to run all of our systems. Um, and it was the same price. So Gail is um, working with Josh at the S A U and they're going to get all that information out to parents as soon as that's up and accounts are all set. This wasn't, wasn't a whole lot. Anything else I missed? Can't read that green. Oh, that's the attendance.
The attendance, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, the proposed added language is if a student has less than eighty percent attendance rate leading up to an end of the year class trip, they will not be eligible to attend the trip. Administration shall review on a case by case basis. So that's the most important piece, the case by case basis. Obviously, if a student's having struggles of any type, um, they're not going to be helped from a field trip. It's more, it's meant to be an incentive or don't blow off two weeks of school and then come in on field trip day.
We don't really, I can't, I mean, I reached out, so I can't pull it up. But.
I can give it to you, if you want mine.
Who's just the traffic pattern?
Yeah, I talked to Brian about that. Um, he, so he, I told him about your idea to flip it. Um, his concern was teachers coming in at the same time. So then it would mean teachers would have to cross over. Um, so he felt like they had enough staff stationed to do the flow.
Yeah.
Of the initial way, yeah. They could change it. They need to.
Um, did anyone have any other questions? The, all the trainers are in the driveway and there aren't that many.
Yes, I had a question.
Yeah.
Um, and it's partly answered in the policies, but um, but I think it's still worth at least mentioning or bringing up. The, um, in previous iterations of the handbook, there has been mention, I think mostly for parents and for kids if they read it, when they read it. But it, there, there are cases where students or families um, are not able or don't pay for lunch. So during that, in that lunch section, uh, and the payment of the lunch section of the handbook, I feel like it's been taken out. And I don't know if it was this year that was taken out or a previous year, but um, but if a student isn't or can't pay, what happens? And yeah, that is one of the policies that we're talking about right now. But is it worth adding some language in there so that parents are, for those parents who don't either, you know, go take the time to go find the policies? Is there stuff worth, it's, it's worth adding in there about lunch payment or not?
Do you want to link a reference to the policy? Nate?
Uh, or summarize in like two sentences what the policy is or what the gist of it is? So that parents, you know, so it's there in a easily accessible place that all parents see. To find, going to find policy language is not the easiest, you know, process for parents. And so if it's there.
They're all electronic trash, right? Handbooks don't get printed anymore, can they? So we, they're electronic needs, so I think we could put the link to the policy with a little sentence also. And then if they want to read the policy, the link is there.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, the policy I remember being kind of.
It's pretty specific, yeah, it's very detailed, but we could put a little, like, needs, needs that a couple of sentences and then a link to the policy if people want to read the whole policy.
I think that's, I think that's a good idea. Um, because yeah, the policy itself is very dense and quite long. Um, so yeah, I would do, I agree with Nate's suggestion that we do a one to two sentence summary and then link to the policy. Thanks, Nate.
Yeah.
Any other thoughts about the handbook?
So will you do approve this tonight or do it next?
I would approve it as amended and then if you see, next meeting you see something.
We'll do approve as amended.
Uh, second. Any other discussion? All right, Zach?
Yes.
Ellen? Nate?
Hi.
Hi. Yeah. Good.
Um, the next item on the agenda is voting at D C S. I did receive um, an email from John Harrington today. We had previously invited the Board of Selectmen to come to a meeting and explain what they were looking for in terms of voting at D C S. They had sent us a letter in the spring asking if we would consider it. We'd write them to one meeting, they didn't attend, um, so we tabled it and then uh, offered them to come to this meeting, which they were going to do. Um, apparently they're no longer interested in discussing um, voting at D C S. I think they're still going to maintain voting at the town hall. For now. Um, I obviously told John that if they changed their mind or want to discuss it again, they have to just let us know and we'll put them back on the agenda. And that, and that's that. Um, high school planning updates. I will just echo what Zach said in public comments in that. This time is to be used for us to brainstorm. We are all aware of our duties to um, figure out a solution for the high school and try to. Figure out a solution that is fair to the taxpayers and that is also fair to the voters who voted for school choice. I think it's something that all of us are aware of and. Um, I will just say to the people who are. Saying that we are only considering Concord, I think you're doing a huge disservice to the town by perpetuating that. Because I don't think we have seriously discussed that at any meeting. Um, I can't speak for everyone on the board or what's exactly going to happen, but I, I just don't think that's ever really been a valid consideration. So I would appreciate everyone's um, consideration while we work through this. There are obviously a lot of conversations between the schools. When you're negotiating, it is a back and forth process. We say we want something, school says they want something else. And this is, this is what a negotiation is. Unfortunately, it takes some time. Um, we are sensitive to the fact that. Aethyridus don't know where they're going. And it has always been my hope that we can get them an answer before school starts. Um, it's not going to be tonight, but I am hopeful. Be either at the next meeting or we'll have to follow a special meeting um, to vote on it before school starts if we can. Um, my understanding is that the high school committee, Ellen and Danielle and Patty, I believe, all met with Concord again. And I don't know if there's anything publicly that you want to share. Again, we can't share everything because we are really in the thick of negotiating right now. But if there's anything you wanted to share or if there's any thoughts about a timeline or any other comments that you wanted to make about high school planning, the floor is yours.
Um, yeah, I was just, I actually wrote something up, but I'm not even going to read it at this point. Um, but there is, we are in negotiations with several schools. And it is very frustrating to hear all the social comments that we're not, that we're ignoring everybody and we're just going with Concord High. It's really upsetting. We have never said that in any of the meetings. And what I feel is that we are trying to give information on all the different schools. We had a meeting last week about specialty comparing two schools. We did that so we can make educated decisions. Whenever we say anything good about Concord High, it seems like everybody goes, oh, you're saying Co Brown is terrible. We are not saying that. We are just giving information. So anyway, I'm going to just back off from that because I obviously get a little bit upset about it. I encourage you to read some of the letters that we have received because there is one talking about Concord and academic excellence. Because we are always hearing Concord High School trashed, about what a horrible school it is and how it's not an excellent school. And people are using one thing to measure, one thing, one standardized test, and they're not using anything else. So what I would encourage is that you read those letters. I would encourage, and I'm going to say here, we did a comparison of schools. We put all that stuff together. I would like people, I encourage you to look at that. We are looking at school choice. We are going to be scheduling a meeting in the Co Brown quite soon. We've been talking to Patty. So we are talking to different schools. We just can't tell you exactly what's happening because it's negotiations. So to end that, I'm, Danielle, do you want to add anything before I move on?
Do you want me, I can give one quick update that I received today that's, I don't think is confidential. I did contact Co Brown. Um, some folks were wondering if they would collect if we considered top off, if they would.
For top offer agreements, which we are, which we have been talking about doing.
If they would collect the parent portion or if that's something we would have to do. And they, um, the assistant headmasters, that would be part of the negotiation. So it wasn't yet, if they couldn't give us a yes or no, it would be more like when we're.
So we have to negotiate on that one.
Negotiating, that would be part of what we, we discussed, how that would work, how that would work.
So like, like everything, we don't have full control of what happens. So even with a top offer agreement, it's not something that the board can just go in and say. Hello, Co Brown, you are accepting a top offer agreement, thank you, you can collect this money from these families.
Then.
So it's just, it's not as simple.
It's not as simple as it's portrayed to me.
Portrayed.
And this is, sometimes people don't like how sausage is made, but this is how it's going to be, right? It's an awful, it's, it's a, it is what it is. It's not free, it's not easy. There is cost involved with whatever decisions we make. Every time you try to make one decision, it's cost implications that are tied to other decisions.
And we've been trying to be really open about what those costs would be.
And, and we have been, yeah, one hundred percent. But at the end of the day, there is, it's not, it doesn't have to cost anything, it's very beautiful. Horrifically simplistic view of the facts and it is inaccurate. So we have to, we have responsibility to board and we have responsibility to look at all of the factors that are involved. And again, you know, I think all of us here, we all have the best interest of the community at heart. Now, we all won't necessarily agree, but there isn't a single person sitting here spending all this time doing everything that we deal with to, to say that we don't have the best interest of the community in mind. But this is a complex thing that requires a tremendous amount of labor to sort through. It has financial implications in what direction we make. And we need to make sure that we look at every. And we need to make sure that we look at every single aspect and think about the impacts in advance. Regards to top off agreements, if the legislative made it, has made it okay, now it's a topic we can discuss. But there's still things that we have to discuss that as a community are way good with top off agreements because it does create situations where there is haves and have nots. And we have to come in terms of we're going to be comfortable with that as a body and if we're going to be comfortable with that as a group. So, you know, I know everybody wants an instant answer and they just want what they want, but you know, due diligence requires time and we need to let Ellen and Danielle do what they're going to have to seize so that this board can make the decision in advance and once we have as much information as we can.
Which we're hoping to do soon, because we have to do soon.
Having, having done it a year ago in negotiations, I know what we're going through and I know how every single time you move one thing, it impacts five others. So I thank you both for putting the effort in to get those sorted out. I don't know how much you're undertaking is and how many does as well. And I think, you know, probably that's just up the top after. But the community is understanding, this is a work in progress. You better let it happen.
So that being said, I would like, I would, I don't know, do I need to move to put the school comparison on our website? To, so for us to all agree to do that? Or should I just suggest, I mean, I would like to see.
I don't think we need a motion. So just for context, immediately after the election and when we were sworn in as board members, Danielle and Ellen took on the task of being on the high school committee and they spent a lot of time and effort putting together a spreadsheet that is comparing a lot of statistics about various schools in our area. We initially talked about this spreadsheet in conjunction with the survey that we sent.
Right.
At that time, I felt it was premature for it to go out. We hadn't had enough time to sort of vet it and review it. And I didn't want people reading into it while they're selecting their survey answers. However, now I think when we're getting down to it and people are going to have to start making decisions soon, I would agree that we can, we should publish it. And with the caveat that we are not promising that any of those schools will be options.
We took what like people said in the beginning when we were listening to the comments, we use the schools that they have.
So as much as people want to read into the spreadsheet, which evaluates multiple schools, I'm saying that we, that this is not a list of the schools that we will be negotiating with. It is for informational purposes only so that people can be better informed about the schools that we're talking about.
And we tried to give all the sources of where the data came from so you can check the sources on it. But it goes through different things like the PSAT scores, the location, population profiles, diversity, finance, the educators, what they offer for curriculum, student life, like athletics and clubs. And some of them, we just gave links to the school websites so you can see like all the different clubs that they have. So it's really just for people to look at and compare the schools.
Yes, and I will also say to dispel any comments that I'm sure we will get, we are not using this in any way to try to sway people into choosing one school or another. I think the information that you have gathered is factual and you have cited all your sources and it's not an attempt to convince anyone about anything. It is an informational document.
And I want to say too that, you know, I, I feel like academic excellence, I feel like all these schools have academic excellence, or we wouldn't even be considering them. So that was one of the very first things that we talked about when we were thinking about choices of school. Do they have academic excellence? So we felt they were. You know, last meeting, people were saying, oh, you know, you didn't mention academic excellence. So yeah, I wonder why, because Concord doesn't have it. No, I, they, they all do, or we wouldn't be considering them. That's our job, is to make sure they're all good schools. So by saying that we think one school has academic excellence, we're not saying the others don't, they all do. And I think if you look at it, you'll see. They do. But you have to look at more than just one test score.
Kendra.
Oh, Nate, did you have something?
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, I had a question about that before we go forward with this. I, I appreciate all the work that has gone into that. And I certainly agree that trying to provide as much information is a valuable step. But my concerns are the same about this step as last time, which is I don't want to be implying too many things. And I, I'm glad you just sort of made that caveat that, you know, what are we using to make our decision? Is this spreadsheet exactly the thing that we're using? You know, there's a lot that we're, we're obviously incorporating into these decisions that we're making in the near future. My question, I guess before we post this is, and this is for Ellen and Danielle, has more data since we looked at this back in March? Has it, I haven't looked at it since March, but there more information in there? Or is it still the same version that we saw back in March?
No, it's, it's, it's different.
We were going to change the order of things.
Oh, right, right.
To alphabetical and.
That was for the survey. Now, we, I mean, this is, I think we listened to some of the things that people said, like for instance dropout rate, I don't think we put that in there. You know, we took that out. But we tried.
Like, like for instance, for instance, Ellen, you just mentioned one of the letters that we received over these last couple of weeks since our last meeting. And I thought it was a very informative letter with a new look at some of the test scores that incorporated some things that I hadn't looked at previously. I thought that was a really useful piece of information. Has that, for instance, gone into the spreadsheet yet? Or might it, might it in the future, in the near future? Like, I think that's an important point.
I'm trying to remember right now. Well, some of the stuff that's in there is diversity. I mean, one of the things that I had in my letter was that people aren't considering when you're looking at test score that Concord High, I'm just, I'll just want to read it really quickly, this part. This is based on 2019 data from the New Hampshire DOE. Concord High is 79.98 white students, Co Brown is over 90%. 31.24% of students are economically disadvantaged CHS, whereas Co Brown is less than 10%. Concord High has 15.8% of students with disabilities, Co Brown is 10. And CHS has lots of students where English is their second language. And yet they test like 98% of their population. The letter that was in there was talking about what percentage of student population are taking these tests. And Concord High is extremely high. They work really, really hard to get all their kids to take the test. And of course, that's going to bring average test scores down. When you're adding in people with, you know, English as a second language, it's a standardized test. It's not meant for somebody who has another language. So the letter that came in was talking, that was specifically what she was talking about, was the percent of how many kids took participation rate in the test. We do not have that in the spreadsheet, but it is in the letter. Danielle, you have a question?
Yeah, right. So again, that's my only, that's all my concern is, is still the same concern from before is that as we release all this information, there, it's, there's still a lot of, a lot of gray out there.
The, the test scores that were talked about were like the standard, the common assessment. Test, the test that the state uses for benchmarks, high schools are PSATs. The PSATs, I'm just looking at right now the spreadsheet. Co Brown for reading is 555, that's their average. Concord High School is 535, that's, that's only 20 points less. For reading, it's 535 at Co Brown, it's 501. And I, I have Pembroke here too, they're all fairly close. So if you take the total mean reading in math for the PSATs, it's 1,090 at Co Brown, it's 1,035 at Concord, it's 968 at Pembroke, Dover High is 1047. I mean, they're all right, really close to each other if you're considering PSATs. But I think, I, if I remember correctly, some of the test scores we've heard were kneecap. And they don't even do kneecaps anymore, they just do separate knee science. I'm not even sure about that, I was trying to research that, they don't, right? They do, it's all common core assessments now, yeah.
And ultimately.
And we had COVID in there too, we made the changeover and we had COVID. Right, so it's, it's kind of crazy to do those stuff.
But for most children, most of our students, they can have a positive experience at any high school.
Yeah.
They will have positive outcomes at any high school. And it's important to remember that.
Right.
The outcomes are partially driven by the students.
Absolutely.
And the students well used to succeed, the students who are misused to lack. And there is, I think occasionally, there's track of discussions, right? Now, there's a certain level of personal responsibility when you get to become a high school student, family responsibility. The outcomes are, the opportunities are there for anybody who chooses.
All right, so I would say, I, I would say, yeah, I'm in favor of sending this out as long as, I, I think it's been clear with our conversation and people who are listening, I, I think will understand that we as a board are, are, yeah, we are looking at as wide a collection of data and information as possible to make, to make these decisions that are coming at us in the next few meetings, like you said. So, yeah, it's good for information for everybody to see.
I would say, just as the community was saying, don't look at costs as the only data point, we're not looking at one test score as the only data point for our decision, so.
And it's not just student performance, maybe that's what, it is cost, student participation. It's the community that's there, it's the opportunities.
Their willingness to take our students.
Willingness to take our students. There is a lot of factors.
And how many students they'll take for what price, that changes.
And will they take any of the students that want to apply there? Now, it can be just, all those processes that go into this before it gets kind of rolled out. It's not, it's not, we'll just sign a contract with, with no, no percentage and top off everywhere else because that doesn't work, it doesn't happen because it's, math isn't going to get disappointing. And you also have to have willing participants in the project.
I do have some things I wanted to say too, Adam.
Please.
Say them, okay. I know with the spreadsheet, I also know that there are people in town that are very pro Concord and they're somewhere very pro, pro Co Brown. And I don't know that the spreadsheet is going to mean anything to them, they might not look at it. I get that, you know, there's some people who definitely want certain schools and that's fine. I think this spreadsheet is more for the families that really just want to see the information, just want to see the differences in different aspects of the school. They want to see what sports one school has over another, you know? As far as some of the community comments, I think just reiterating what everyone has said already and has been, it's been very disheartening to hear how the audience has heard these meetings so vastly differently. I stepped out last week and I think shaking my head, like, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't understand. I, I know I came onto this board saying from the very start, no matter what my opinion is for school choice, I am going to work hard to make sure I do what the town voted for because that is my job. So for people to say that, you know, I, I'm just going to speak for myself, that I am just pushing for an extended contract with Concord is maddening because I don't think I'd be spending all the extra time I've been doing with emails and setting up meetings and even per a community member, holding a special meeting in July with the board to sort this out. So please, I know there's a lot of frustration, there's a lot of impatience in the town right now. Be patient with us. I am determined to get some of this sorted out before the school year starts for the incoming eighth graders. That has been a priority of ours, as well as hearing the town about school choice, so.
I will also, as a caveat, say that I am deeply disappointed by any comments that say they will vote on anything related to the school unless people get exactly what they want. As a board, we are always focusing on what is best for the students and what is best for the community. And for people in the community to say, I don't care what's best for the community or the students, I want what I want and it doesn't matter, I think it's very disheartening. Correct. We unfortunately do have a space problem at DCS. On one hand, everyone is saying, how can our students spend these decrepit modulars? And on the other hand, everyone is saying, we're not going to pay for this if you don't give me exactly what we want for high school. And I just can't really square those two opinions. And I think just the, the premise that we're all acting on bad faith for some reason is very disheartening because we spend a lot of time thinking about these things and trying to figure out a way to make this all work. And I, I, I can't convince people that, you know, we are acting in good faith, but I know every member of this board and I, I firmly believe that we all have students and the community's best interests in mind. Are there any other comments about high school planning updates for now? Okay.
Yeah, does the, does posting the, the spreadsheet require a motion or not?
I don't think so. Could you just make sure, send it to Ashley and I in the, in the format that, that needs to go on the website and make sure we have the right one?
Yep.
Thank you.
So it's not going to be a, is it going to be a live, live document that's shared? Or is it going to be a downloaded, like, whatever, PDF or something?
I would say a PDF.
PDF, yeah.
That will go on the SAU website.
I want people to.
With high school information, right?
With high school information. So we can also put, we can't upload a document to Facebook, we can upload photos.
Can you upload a link?
You can upload, no, not, we, not really. To the SharePoint. Right. So not really. We can, I have done a Google link, like, from my.
Or you could do, you could do a screen capture of showing it where it is, yeah.
So like for the agenda, I posted photo because you can't post a link to the SharePoint. But we'll figure out how to get it posted to the Facebook, not as well. With some of the caveats that I have already made.
It's Ashley's last name, yeah.
T L A D U.
Okay, thanks, thank you.
Okay, so now we are on to 23, 24 board goals. I put this on the agenda tonight, not so that we would finalize our goals tonight, but just so that we can start thinking about goals. I would really like to get goals voted on by our first business meeting in September. So in the drive are the goals from last year. So if everyone wants to take a look at those and then we can start brainstorming. I would recommend anyone sort of write down any goals that they think the board should have for the next school year. Any comments?
And you want us, you want us to submit those into the, the drive for our next meeting?
Yeah, that's a, yes, I think that makes sense. Submit, what do they do, email Ashley or you?
Give them, both, either, either one of us, but copy me and Danielle's email.
Okay. If you would like to draft goals and have them reviewed before the meeting, send an email to Patty and Ashley so that they can get uploaded into the drive. Otherwise, you're welcome to bring the goals to the meeting, the first business meeting in September, and we can draft them.
Can I? Kendra. Can I, can I just offer as an idea, maybe an initial draft could be for our next meeting? And then we could finalize them for the September meeting?
I think that's a good idea. Two weeks seems like enough time to drop some ideas down. And then we can finalize September meeting, first September meeting. Thank you, Nate.
Yeah.
Do you have questions about the board goals or anything related to that?
One, we never really went back and looked at last year's goals. You know, often there's sort of an annual, like a calendar event is to, you know, finalize the goals in, let's say, whatever, July, August, September, maybe last year was, it wasn't until October. But, but then we also want to come back at some point and kind of think about how we did with our previous year's goals before too much time gets away. So that was just something we, we had a lot going on, but that did not get done in the spring.
Okay.
So I don't know if we want to do that or not, but it's something we've done in the past.
I definitely think we should and everyone has them because they're in the drive for this week. So it's really added to the discussion for next, next meeting. Reviewing those goals, doing a draft of the next school year goals. Does that work?
Works for me.
Okay. Board reports, PTO update.
I don't have any updates, but I'm sure to talk about a barbecue.
Yeah, barbecue, okay. So I, three of us were not on the board last year for the barbecue, though you were on the PTO, so you probably know. What do you need from us? How does this work? What, what were you talking about?
Well, Trish, you work with the kitchen to get all the food done, so that's covered. We do watermelon and cookies. And you guys have to do a lot of cooking.
What was that, it's a four-person operation to run grills.
Okay, well.
You're going to have to burn all the hair off your arms.
I'd use to grill approximately one, so.
So then you may want to, you know, a person.
Do you get the buns ready?
No, that's my job.
Oh, that's your, that's my job.
Listen, everybody has a role. Listen, everybody has a role.
Condiments, condiments, make sure they're tall and clean.
So in the past, though, I believe you guys have brought like your grilling tools and things like that because I don't know how many sets we have. And I believe we have two propane tanks and the grills we have actually, let me function if you have four.
Okay, so I think the school has two, but we still need.
The school has two, but we need two more. And last year I took them to get filled and the guy looked at me like I was crazy because he said they were full. It's so. I don't know, do you want me to, do you want me to grab them again and see if they need to be filled?
Can we get Chris to do that?
We're, we're Chris.
He's got nothing going on. We can figure it out, I'll swing by.
Okay, and then you'll bring two extra, too?
Um, in terms of advertising for this, do you guys have like an event or anything on your Facebook page? Or do you want us to make an event on our school board page?
The school always made the events with the hours and all the information and I just shared it.
Okay.
Is, was this, last year did we, did we, I feel like we discussed last year the idea of opening this up and making it a community-wide event rather than just a school-community event. Patty, do you remember how that conversation went? Can you remind me?
With our parking situation this year.
I know.
We may want to hold off one more year then.
Yeah, good.
I'll take, I'll take, we're like parting people at the door to see if they're involved with the school.
Just we might have trouble with parking, I suppose.
But, but I guess what I was asking is if we put it on the school board Facebook page, that might be too broad a circulation or say, if we do say something like, school, community, parents and students are welcome or something like that?
I think the DCS back-to-school barbecue, yeah.
What do you schedule tours?
It was Monday, the 28th. And did we say four to seven this time or four to six?
I don't have a preference. Do we usually do two hours? Personally, two hours seems tight for me for people who are getting home from work.
So we have.
I love a dead time table.
Historically, over the years, it's about an hour of it that's really, really busy. Like the first half hour and the last half, last half hour, if you require it. And honestly, the last half hour is a lot of staff coming in. So I think two hours is, is just slow.
Do we know what teachers have been saying in the back to school letter?
One said they said those letters were up to seven. About the teachers because they're already here all day, like, are only here from, say, four to five, third. Four to six at the most.
Well, which probably be consistent with what people have already said.
I thought we said four to seven for some reason, but I don't really remember why. And I think it was to give more time in the classrooms and that way we would still be cooking until later when the teachers came home.
That seems fine to me, but I have not done this before, so.
So much fun, it's actually the best school we're having.
What else do we need to plan for, prepare for?
I'm sorry, maybe you guys were just talking about this, but are the teachers are going to be having open classrooms that night as well, right?
Yes.
Yes, okay, but not the middle school or that's also the middle school? I feel like the middle school was a different night last year, but maybe I'm wrong.
We didn't have the middle school meeting the same night. I remember years ago, we all went in the cafeteria and had a middle school meeting and Brian went over the handbook for middle school and things like that. We didn't do that last year, but middle school was still here.
So Kristen will put out the schedule of events for kids.
So I think the big thing is the tanks, like all around to cook and the barbecue tools and coolers for whoever has coolers.
I do.
And I know Principal Witty always brings her big, she's a huge giant one.
Does that mean you need ice, too?
Yes. I think Ma's Cafe helped us last year with ice, we can reach out to them again.
What time do you want the board meeting to be there to go? Mine's not that helpful.
I'm just going to say you don't want.
Which is cute, which is not that helpful.
She'll entertain everyone else.
Okay, so I will, at least before this, we'll keep talking about this again on the 16th, just as a reminder, but I will send an email with just what time to be there, what people need to bring, et cetera. So we can get that organized. Is there anything else you need us to do? We don't need like condiments or like utensils or.
Just the grilling utensils. Trish has taken care of everything else.
Okay.
All the food, all the plates.
Yeah, so ice and coolers, too.
Ice and, I'll check that. I couldn't remember anyways, the knives were, like, where we got the knives, we had a lot of those as well.
I think we always borrow them from the cafeteria or. And then usually Chris helps us like get all the tables we need and like all the trash cans we need and all those things, he helps us get outside.
Do we have like music or anything? Do people want, do we do like a speaker?
Last year they tried to add some stuff in there.
Yeah, thank you. Sometimes if the stuff forgets to do.
Okay.
I mean, it's, it's pretty loud.
Okay.
Loud and soft.
You never, you never doubt, ever.
I have a four-year-old, hasn't gone to kindergarten yet.
It's a good time, it's actually, it's a nice difference.
Okay, sounds good. Anything else? Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, I don't think there was an executive. We had a quick one last night.
Oh, I couldn't, yes. I'm in the need to hire our final alternative program teacher, we still have one left to hire, so that's literally all it was.
I was not in attendance.
I think we had, had our forum, there were three people.
Yes. Okay, do you have Ms. Witty's principal report?
Nope, she's going to get those next week.
Great. Curriculum review board.
Hi, it was a short meeting, May 20, well, it was May 22nd. Oh, we talked about it since then, yeah. So there wasn't really much talked about. The curriculum that's going to be coming up for, coming to us will be library, art, music, and wellness. And I have to say, one thing that was, well, it made me a little bit, I don't know if that's the right word, I was a little bit concerned. There was no science rep at all. And they, the comment was actually made that they might do integrating science and social studies into ELA and that really upset me, so it was just a very off-the-cup remark. It was my very first meeting, so I didn't say much, but I'm certainly going to be on top of that. But I would like to see a science rep and, you know, maybe even, I know social studies has been rolled into language arts, but there should be a science rep there. There wasn't.
I'm also going to add MBC to the board reports, it's on the agenda, but I will add it in case Zach has any updates. Okay.
There is the presentation.
Yes, I have given the slideshow from the municipal budget committee. For those who don't know, had the New Hampshire Municipal Association come and give a presentation about budgets and how the municipal committee and the governing bodies work together to create those budgets and get them passed, hopefully. I have given these slides to Patty and she'll upload them to the drive so everyone can see them. It was a very informative session and I would encourage everyone to look at the slides. I know the New Hampshire Municipal Association said they do budget trainings with the School Board Association. So if I get dates and stuff for that, I will circulate those because I think everyone should get a good primer on the budgeting process, which probably needs to start. Sure does. Do we know when we will start doing that?
So we typically try to have the budget due the first meeting in November. We're hoping, I think we're going to be able to switch, our consultant that we've been using to help with audits and look at our overall business practices has suggested that we should be using our accounting system to do our budgeting, not Excel spreadsheets, which I've, I've partly agree with.
Yeah.
That just frees room for error when you're doing manual work. You can export things into Excel from the system, but we should be putting everything into the system, so. We haven't closed books yet, there, so there's still some stuff coming in and we're trying to get all the grants closed. So hopefully that will go smoothly and quickly, quickly, once those pieces are done. And then we can start, Mrs. Witty, pretty much when school starts, puts things out to teachers to already start looking at the following year. It comes in drips and drabs, it's not, you know, we haven't even barely ended this year. We're trying to estimate what our utilities are going to be and so it's, it's, it takes some work.
From a process standpoint, so the school district, remember it goes to zero-based budgets, she starts at zero. Buses, food, electrical, she adds everything, nothing is necessarily a carryover. It always is justified as it's added. That being said, the process takes time. Admin works on it, we get it in November. We're usually waiting for updates for benefit costs, retirement. Mid-November, we wrap it up, beginning of December. Usually, that's the way we see meetings, they always meet the day after we do. I'm sorry, they always meet the day before we do, so they always end up a week behind us on anything. But usually, you know, first, second week of December, it's up to you to see. I don't have the assignments, are you the alternate for the project?
Yes, I am.
Probably, because I'll be retired next year.
Yes.
Worth trying to jump in at least when the school starts.
Definitely, I will plan to.
You're welcome to take the table and I'll, I'll sit in the audience if you want.
No. I'm happy to watch.
Is that a hard no?
Yeah, hard no, I am happy to watch and review the process and obviously, if specific questions come up that I for some reason know about, I'm happy to answer any questions.
And next year.
This is not a board report and something that I should have probably brought up in facility updates, but this is a non-agenda item, I'm adding it right now. There was a, an email, a potential grant to the element, just know if you want to chat about that.
Well, I, I don't have my thing up, but basically, you had, you were thinking about it for solar, solar is completely exempt from that grant.
Oh, okay.
Right, so they had had a solar grant for communities back in March, but for schools, this was for energy stuff. So, energy efficiency, there is something there for HVAC, but it seems pretty hard to get it for what you have to do.
Is there anything in there for?
What do we need to insulate? If you're from it and I will find. Yes, it's kind of a.
I didn't read the language.
Yeah, and there's a lot that you have to do to get the grant, I mean, an awful lot. So you have to letters from, from everybody, yeah. You also have to provide so much in kind. And you have to be a disadvantaged school, so you have to be certain, you have to meet two of the priorities and I don't think we meet them. But anyway, I can, I can send it to you guys so you can look at, I started to make a spreadsheet and then I thought, busy on something else.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry, it's, it's.
Press it on you now.
From a solar standpoint.
Yes.
Target, if we're going to have a solar project, it's to be within 12 months of.
Right.
Warranty, warranty for the, carries if the solar goes on for 12 months, it has long months and 12 months, you have to come and be certified in solar. It's a true accomplishment, but.
Yeah, it's not my word, but it's, but it's absolutely not, so it says right in there, it's not for, so.
And the way that we'll handle the solar.
Or any kind of electricity production.
Yeah, it's, it's been one of the.
So potentially we'll think about that for a warrant article or if we can use one of our trust funds or something.
So depending on the process, and Chris was just on your, like, we've talked to some solar companies a couple of years ago. Typically for schools, solar is not like a, there's agreement, so that's more of an agreement. Real estate, panels up, power, power, it's great, and that's how it works, so.
Okay.
I don't know, it would be a warrant article to do it because of the way, but once we have a generalized idea, it's like.
Okay.
Kendra?
Yes.
I had a quick question to go back to the CRB with Ellen, and that was, Ellen, sorry, which were the curriculum that were up this upcoming year?
So it's library, art, music, and wellness and health.
If you're looking for, and when you get to the point at some point in the year, if you're looking for readers to take a look at it later in the process, I'd be happy to take a look at a couple of those if you need a reader, in particular the library one I'd like to look at.
Great.
I'd be happy to look at whatever if you want, if you need.
Okay, cool, thanks, I'll make a note of that.
All right, it is 7:30, I think we probably have a few minutes to go through policies.
I can just quickly walk through comments on them more than anything. Yeah, so the meal charging policy, I filled in the blanks and sent it this afternoon back to the school because I just want them to look at all the blanks that we filled in and make sure that they're accurate, then represent what we actually do here.
So it's not ready for approval?
No, no, right now, no, I want, I want them to give it one more look to make sure.
I'm just wondering about one thing in there Patty.
Yes.
Is there, when they have to talk, you know, like when a student's account gets way up and all that, are they, is there discretion in dealing with the student? Because it wasn't really in the policy.
What do you mean by discretion with student?
Like, like, you know, the student, you know, you can't have this lunch, you have to have this lunch.
Oh, no, no.
I mean, it's.
No, we, the students get the lunch, yeah.
I know that, but what I'm saying is, is there discretion when they do that? Because that would be really embarrassing for the child.
Yeah, no, we, the board, and that's something the board has to discuss if you want to change that. I struck that because this board decided that students get the same lunch, so that there's no like.
Oh, they get the same lunch, they don't get the peanut butter and jelly or whatever, okay, all right.
Here's, here's, we get away with the peanut butter.
Okay, so I was just concerned about them being singled out, not singled out to get the lunch, okay, that's all.
Correct, and that's, no.
Whatever's on the menus.
Okay, all right, good, that was my only, okay.
And then there's GCG, which is the substitute professional staff employment. I don't think, even though yours is old, it hasn't, the School Board Association didn't change it, so that should be easy to look at. The, you have a third reading, you had a policy on tuition of resident high school students to public secondary vocational programs. The reason it's on here is we sorted by date and we're trying to bring up all of your, all of the really old policies. There is no School Board Association policy for that, so I'm assuming back in the day, if we'll put that in, making it clear where the students had choice at high school, that they would still have access to the CRTC programs, no matter where they went, is sort of my reading of it. I don't know, we'll leave it on the agenda because you're, you're negotiating and that may actually come off, so I think just keep the policy as.
I had, I have a question about that, is an MOU considered a contract?
If it was, if you, if the school that you were negotiating with didn't have a CRTC program, you would want to make sure you addressed that. And if you did it in the MOU, you wouldn't need a policy. So I don't know, I'm, I'm assuming this was when it was like wide open, because it's a really old policy. Where I'm assuming at some point made the decision that wherever students ended up, they would have access to CRTC, sounds like. That probably needs to be on hold for now.
Yes.
Field trips and excursions, the, there was, the School Board Association did not have a paragraph that's in your current policy and I think we talked about that with taking. there was, uh, the School Board Association did not have a paragraph that's in your current policy, and I think we talked about that with taking photos. So I think my understanding is you want to leave that pack, that paragraph in that mentions, um, like, teachers take students on field trips, parents need to check if they have permission to photograph them.
From the teachers and from the place they're going, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so, uh, my understanding was you wanted that back, yeah, so if you wanna act on that, or if people still need more time, that's.
Yeah, I added that.
Was there any, was there a reason why overnight or out-of-state trips have to have board approval?
I think that's been, that's always been that way, just because.
Of the, of the law, that's always been.
They expect.
It, well, because you're taking kids overnight, and you don't want.
Yeah, or side.
My board, I'm giving that.
Actually, what we're.
The board wants to hear what it says. Right, you want more consideration, let's further away or overnight. You want the board to specifically address that and approve, that's pretty standard.
Um, does anyone feel like they want to act on that one, or should we hold it and people under review it for their?
Just so you know, the, in the first paragraph, the last two sentences are duplicate.
I saw that, I think it's on your original items.
All right.
As a draft, yeah.
Um, I will second. Any discussion?
Okay, Zach?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yeah.
Nate?
Hi.
Hi, sure.
Great. Um, JJC was student public performances, that was a, um, really old policy that you had, and Nate had suggested some edits that you received a couple of meetings ago, so that one's finished, if you're interested in moving in.
I am good with it as well, so do you wanna make a motion?
I'm looking to approve the JJC student public performance policy.
As revised.
As revised, sorry, thank you. Second that motion. Okay, any discussion?
Yeah, I have discussion on that one. Um, what I, I, I kind of threw the language together a little bit quickly last time, um, and I think most of it I don't wanna change, but I think the last sentence I would like to go in and change, so I'm gonna propose an amendment, to this, uh, policy before we hopefully approve it, and, um, and the only change I wanna make is that, uh, let me pull up the language. Uh, are you all looking at it now or not?
Oh, we, you might wanna wait, so you all have access.
Okay, um, send the amendment, and, yeah, will you, um, make the change, Nate, and then we'll vote on it at the next meeting?
Are you going to withdraw your motions?
Yeah.
I will withdraw.
Withdraw my amendment, yeah. Charles.
Okay. Uh, and then there are old and outdated, um, policy that you had was on, um, student corporal punishment, it was really old. There is, um, there's a new School Board Association policy that is not required, but it is recommended, so you'll need to decide if you wanna go with their, their new version, or, or you're choosing not to have it at all. It does, it sort of references back to, there is a restraint policy that has to be followed, um, by law, so. That will be your choice, you can, you have to do that tonight. Um, and then JLCF is the wellness policy, again, lots of blank stuff filled in, and I sent that for one more look at the school, so I wanna make sure that, that it represents the way they conduct their wellness committee here before we approve that. Um, and then KDB, um, doesn't exist in the School Board Policy Manual, and that's sometimes what happens when policies are really old and they haven't been reviewed, um, because it's about right to know, and that's, um, discussed in other policies, like your access to minutes describes how that process unfolds, and then it's pretty much by statute, so.
I'm gonna strike that.
You can just rescind it, yeah.
I'm gonna strike that.
Second, any discussion? You look like you have a question.
I'm just not sure, I don't understand why we're, why we're getting rid of it?
It doesn't exist in the School Board Association Manual anymore, because, um, right to know law has been put into the
Oh.
policies that it applies to, so if, if access to public documents and minutes is its own separate policy, I don't think. You have to follow the law, so, right?
Right, right, yeah, okay.
The law would trump our policy either, right?
Right, okay.
Sometimes it's good to get rid of a policy.
We try to keep, we try to keep the, um, our manual to mirror what the School Board Association has with the foable letters that they have, because when legislation changes and we have to update policies, then we're always using the most recent laws.
Okay, sorry. Right, so like, our old policy may not reflect changes to the right to know policy, or right to know law.
Yeah.
So, probably best to rescind. Um. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Nate?
Hi.
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 Okay. Great, we are on to informational items.
Um, I have one piece of information I was asked to gather, and that was the, um, current cost of renovations and new construction. People were just curious when they're looking at the, um, proposed issue, how much it would cost. This, of course, came with lots of disclaimers and it depends on lots of different things, but round numbers are architects, um, for a couple of projects saw an average of a hundred and seventy-five dollars a square foot for renovation, and four hundred and fifty dollars a square foot for new construction, and they're seeing approximately six percent ex- escalation per year. So those is, yeah, so those are current and lots of disclaimers.
It's looking similar.
Yep, four hundred and fifty dollars a square foot for new construction, yeah.
I was interested in what, um, Lulu Perry said, a philosophy of if any of the stuff is grandfathered, because, you know, when we talk about we're out of compliance, are we really out of compliance?
Yes, yes, until we, until we start renovating or touching the building, we're grandfathered, we're grandfathered.
So we're not gonna be condemned, but whether or not it's the safest option for our students.
I, I understand, but I just wanted to be clear on that.
There were, like, the fire alarm was a safety issue, and we're not, like, as leaking that, yes.
The roof, yeah, right, I understand.
Those are repairs, but we.
Yeah.
They're actually built.
Like, the, the schools aren't gonna get shut down because our cafeteria is too small.
Right, or we have second graders, first graders going up to the second floor, it's just not, that's what to do.
I guess the DOE could come in and we could get cited for it, um, because it doesn't follow rules. They haven't been coming to do onsite reviews like that, um, in years, um.
Yeah, I'm, I mean, I'm not trying to get away with doing something that's not allowed, I just was curious about if things were grandfathered or not,
Yes.
and opening up a can of worms to spend a ton of money if you don't have some.
Some things are, and some things aren't, that's, that example of having kids on the second floor, don't think they would deserve to be grandpa.
That's not grandfathered, okay.
That's like a significant safety issue.
It's, it's minimum standards, square footage and, and locations of classrooms.
Nice to look at all those things, you think what's grandfathered and what isn't, so what are the, to prioritize?
Yeah, and, and obviously, that wasn't meant to mean where the architects were grandfathering. Is that how, is this, this, this? I know the plans that their most, um, Russian kind of boss were pretty conservative. Four classrooms, shuffle the two things around, and a few things better, longer.
I, my only caution with the four classrooms is that.
It's not enough.
It's, it's not, like, you're not, you have legal requirements to service students with special education, and if you have them double, tripled and quadrupled up, that's an issue, so it's not just that we have modules, there are, I, I'm not saying it's needs to be huge, but we wouldn't want to just, like,
Right, it's like having one room.
like, what are the top five priorities of areas that we are, we have issues?
Yeah.
I will say, I would like to sort of see a list of those.
That's what I'd like to do, is take those things and say, and come up with what are our top priorities? And then, what can we do about that?
Obviously, we've got to, we do not have to do another addition.
Do what?
Add on, do another addition like we did back in the, what was it, early? Late nineties, was it?
Well, it. We also have to consider, I mean, fifteen million, I mean, that's obviously a lot, but how much are we saving by getting rid of the modules?
Nowhere near fifteen.
Right, I know, but, I mean, we have to consider that in whatever we come up with as well, what did we save between getting rid of?
What fifteen million is, but that's also, last time around, we were fully renovating this place, now we're looking at more discussion, just leave this alone. Stick something on the side.
Right.
Classrooms, bathrooms.
A lot, yeah.
A little bit of.
Library downstairs.
Correcting some spaces, shuffling some stuff around, but, you know, the more minimal, you know, that set of plans, notice, stairwell, interior, this is what we created, stuff, right, out of spaces, sensing minimal renovation, not, you're jumping because you're holding a stairwell at twenty-five feet away. For, for the new building, the gap in between, that's one idea, certainly tweak, sort of, at the end of the day.
I will say, we're straying a little bit from informational items.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
Um, I, you know, obviously, this is important, and we're obviously all thinking about it and working on it,
Bring us back, bring us back.
but I don't wanna go to a stray, since it was not an agenda either.
Okay.
Um, anything else for informational items? Okay, uh, back to public comments.
I'm really black, meeting house, hell. I respect the challenges you guys have in making that spreadsheet to get a clear vision for yourself, as a parent.
It's right.
Then there was life. As a parent of a now coming second grader, I have been looking at this since the thought of his conception, so, and I'm sure many other parents have been putting thought into this for years. So I do think that it's probably going to be looked at as more of a criticism opportunity, but I do appreciate being out there to understand what you guys, what are you looking at? Um, I personally pulled up every town report for the past fif- fourteen-ish years that the school, that Concord has been providing us with the list of our students and their graduation rates. Um, fiscal year twenty-eleven, DCS graduated fifty-three students out of our eighth grade class. Concord graduated thirty-five, four years later. In fiscal year twenty-twelve, uh, twenty-twelve, DCS graduated fifty-four students, Concord graduated thirty-five, four years later. In fiscal year thirteen, DCS graduated fifty-two students, Concord graduated thirty-five, four years later. In fiscal year eighteen, DCS graduated forty-nine students, Concord graduated thirty-four years later. Twenty-nineteen, DCS did forty-eight, Concord did thirty-six. In tw- twenty-sixteen, DCS did thirty-eight, Concord did thirty-four, four years later. This was the closest gap, four, four years, students difference. Uh, fiscal twenty-seventeen, DCS fifty-four, Concord four years later did thirty-four. In twenty-eighteen, DCS forty-eight, Concord thirty-seven, four years later. Uh, respectably in order, we are missing eighteen, nineteen, seventeen, sixteen, eighteen, nineteen, seventeen, nineteen, twelve, for twenty and eleven students. That makes up thirty-three, thirty-five, thirty-two, thirty-eight, twenty-five, ten, thirty-seven, and twenty-two percent, around about. So, we are significantly missing a large portion of students that are either A, not graduating, or B, not choosing Concord. And those numbers might not be entirely accurate, those are only the numbers that I have available. Um, so take it with a grain of salt, but I haven't seen anybody else produce these numbers. And based on your spreadsheets, I'd really like to see these numbers, I wanna know where our students are going, and if the ones that are excelling and doing well and put themselves into positions to succeed at Concord are doing so great, but what about the other students? Because we've heard a lot about special ed and making sure those needs are met, but what about those students in the middle who aren't special ed, who might not be getting an education and are falling off the map? They are equally as important and likely just as vulnerable, and they should not be disregarded, and they should be considered immensely. And, and those are the students that worry me, because I have two young boys that are very active, and once they get to high school, that's a, a very vulnerable age, where we no longer have a vote on those school board members, or those teachers, or anything at that table. So, having the opportunity to choose a high school that we hope may be in their best interest is just, it's critical to me, it's critical to a lot of parents. And Concord has a lot to offer, and I have said this every time, I have nothing against Concord, it might be the choice school that my child goes to. But, right now, where we're standing, Dover has an equal program plus FFA, Concord doesn't provide FFA. It, it doesn't support it. Co-Brown has FFA, and I know personally, they're very supportive of four, which are very passionate areas for me. Academic excellence, it's gonna be what we put into it, but there's, there's so much more to it, and I really want to just make sure you understand that when I'm sitting here talking about another school, it's because I see these numbers and I wanna know where these students are going, because they're supposed to be at Concord.
Thanks.
Any other?
Coming verbal, Karen Road, so, now you know how I feel, right, so I got three minutes, I gotta get it all out really, really fast. And then you guys can take time in your meeting to paraphrase and mischaracterize the comments that I made early and earlier, and I have no rebuttal. So, um, you can, you can join the conversation on social media or on town, right, you can choose as individuals to participate, but you don't, but you could. We, we can't, so, say you wanna hear from the public, we listen, we digest, and, um, we have a meager three minutes to communicate everything with the board, it's like speed dating. And when you're giving your comments, people are frowning, shaking their heads, no, that is not the warm and fuzzy, right, I mean, the stoic, like, no look is cool, right, that's, I mean, that's what you do, right? You just sit there politely and listen, but to shake your head and to make faces when somebody is, is giving you uh, what, what they believe to be valuable information to help you, right? Because, because we all want a good outcome, right, that's what we want, that's what we're, what we're, I get it, right? One data point, one test, you can't put all the eggs in that basket. I've been begging this board, for years, give me the other data sets. What are the other data sets? The only data sets I can find publicly available, right, are the statewide testing. And the numbers that I've published are the numbers that the state has published for eleventh grade. That's what we only test in eleventh grade in high school, right? And I, I, I quote NECAP back eight years ago, we used NECAP, and then I quote SBA, Smarter Balance Assessment Consortium, for three years that we used that, and now I quote the New Hampshire statewide assessment system, because that's, that's the test we're currently using, right? I go digging through all that data, I get the disaggregated spreadsheet, and I go through, here's a game, right? They actually publish the numbers for a lot of different categories, English as a second language, certain minorities, by sex, by race, all this stuff. So, I, I challenge you, right, tease those numbers out and tell me if you hit equal liberty. If you're saying that Concord is doing poo-poo on, on the, on the PSAT compared to Co-Brown because of those populations, then tease those numbers out and see if the, the Concord number inflates, right? Now, it'd be fair enough to look back at me and say, well, screw you, you want the information, you go do it. It's not my job, and I don't believe that their minority kids, that their English as a second language kids, I don't believe that those kids are dragging those test scores down that far. And, and I'm not gonna use the words that a lot of people use to describe, um, the type of talk when we talk about it like that. So, there, there's my three minutes, you guys can, uh, take it, use it, don't use it, doesn't matter. People want school choice, get school choice, it's all a lot.
Thank you. Other comments? Um, I am now gonna make a motion to go into non-public session pursuant to New Hampshire RSA ninety-one dash A, colon, three, subsection two, small letter K.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry, we need to add B, oh, and B, sorry.
So moved.
Small letter K and small letter B. So moved, so, Nate?
Yes.
Yes, yes. Thank you all for coming, we, you are welcome to stick around, it might be a long one.
Exactly.
Sorry, yeah, yeah.
Maybe you should just stop the video.
Thank you.
When is it done? Okay, let me think about it, okay, obviously.